So the combinations happen.
Good evening, everybody. And we are now being live streamed. Welcome to this, the first of three meetings this evening. We are starting with interim, even though the person you're expecting to come. Ah, maybe that is the person now. And welcome to anybody watching on our YouTube channel. And welcome. Is that Philippa?
It is, yes. Hi, everyone.
Good evening. We just have a couple of agenda items before we get to you. There's no members of the public here between you? No. I'm sorry, Caroline. Caroline, you are here. Would you like to speak at this point? Hold your fire.
I didn't just say she's here, madam.
Any apologies for absence. Thank you very much. And we've got councillor Ozzy Bogan also on soon tonight. Wave madly at me when you want to speak. And item two, the correction about the apologies. Receive councillor Collins' apologies to the meetings as listed, which weren't communicated to members at those meetings. Everybody happy with that? Any declarations of interest at this point? In which case, we move swiftly on to item four, the establishment of the Buckinghamshire Oxfordshire and Berkshire. Is that correct? Integrated Care Board? And we've got Philippa Baker, who's the executive director for Buckinghamshire here this evening, to speak about the establishment of this new NHS structure and its impact on Buckingham. So over to you, Philippa.
Hi, everyone. Can I check how long I've got as well?
Well, this is the first of three meetings this evening. So if you can keep it succinct as possible. I think, I don't know if it's fair to say, the big issues for us in Buckingham are the shortage of GPs and the pressure on the GP practice. We only have one in Buckingham and also the status of the Planned Health Centre at Lace Hill.
Yeah.
Those are the two big issues I think here at the moment. But we would also be very interested to find out about the new structure.
Yeah, so shall I do about five minutes on the new structure? And then I'll probably be very much in sort of listening mode about the issues that you want to raise with me. And there may be things that I take away. But is that okay? Five minutes or so? And then you can take the conversation wherever you would like. So, hi, everyone. So yeah, I'm Philippa Baker. I joined Bob ICB, as we call it, it's a little bit quicker, in October as the place director for Buckinghamshire. This is my first NHS role. Prior to this, I worked in the Department for Health and Social Care. I was a civil servant for 20 years. But my job just before this was working on the legislative framework that created these statutory ICSs. So I felt that having done the theory, it was only right that I come and work on the practice and learn how to get systems going in the real world. And the reason I'm here is because I really do believe in system working. So a lot of the challenges that are facing the health and care system are really challenges that no one bit of the system can tackle alone. There are about issues around the interface between different parts of the system, particularly the interface across health and social care. But also, you know, mental health versus physical health, the links between the acutes through community, through to primary. All of the bits of the system need to work together really well, as well as each individual part of the system working well. So that's really how I see my role as place director and the role of the Integrated Care Board and on our role at place is to try and make sure that we're bringing together the different parts of the system to work together well. And that's not easy to do, and it's going to be quite a long, a long project. But hopefully, we can make some progress with the structures that we've started to develop. And I'll just say a bit, I mean, this is quite techie, but it is a little bit technical how the legislation fits together. So I'll just say a couple of things about the different acronyms that you're probably hearing about. Some of you may be expert. I don't know if any of you have got health background. Some of you may not be expert in this. So I'll just spend a couple of minutes explaining all the different terms. So across Bob, so you're right, it's Buckinghamshire, Oxfordshire and Berkshire West. It's a system, an integrated care system that has three places within it. And the system is designed to bring together health and local government at a system level to plan and deliver health and care services for a population. And at that system level, there's two elements to the system that you'll hear about. You'll hear about the Integrated Care Board. That's the body that I work for. That's the NHS body that commissions NHS services at a system level. And the easiest way to think about that is if you're familiar with the old CCG, it's a bit like a big CCG on a system footprint. And then alongside Bob ICB, the NHS bit, you have a partnership element, which is called the ICP, the Integrated Care Partnership at system level. And that's an equal partnership committee across health and local government that comes together to look at planning integrated care across the patch. So those are the two structural entities that you might hear about at system level. And at place level, the legislation didn't actually, wasn't very prescriptive about what should be put in place within each geography. So we already have health and wellbeing boards at each place level. So that's the current planning footprint for health and care and integration. And those still exist, and they are still very much the primary vehicle for delivering health and care plans, which are drawn from joint strategic needs assessments, which are delivered by the Health and Wellbeing Board. But then within that, my role as place director is to try and create the right partnership arrangements, the right conditions for joint working that will enable the different parts of the place to come together and deliver. So that's a sort of very brief summary. And as you can imagine, there's reams and reams out there on the technicalities of how this might work. But one of the reasons the legislation didn't specify what should happen in each place is because they're all so different. So if you look at somewhere like Fimley, our near neighbour, they have really small places that we would probably call more like neighbourhoods. And then there are other huge ICSs that have maybe 13 local authorities within their footprint, like up in Cumbria and the North East, for example. So there's huge variety across ICSs. So each ICS really needs to come together and design the right services for their population. So what I've been doing, I'll just say a couple of things about what I've been doing to bring this back to the real world since I started in October. So I'm still very new. I'm still very much learning about the patch and about the opportunities. But some of the things that we've been focusing on, so you mentioned primary care and lots of population growth happening in the country, lots of challenges around access to GPs. So we've been working on various ways we can support GPs through winter. And one of the primary things that we've been working on is cloud-based telephony within GP services, so that people can access their GPs, book appointments more easily. We've also created a 111 hub over the winter to help redirect calls into 111 away from very, very pressured GP services into different parts of the system that might have a bit more capacity. So for example, pharmacies taking calls where appropriate or redirecting people into other parts of the health and care system as appropriate. So lots of work going on there, lots of work on estates development, et cetera. I don't have an update on Lace Hill to bring today, but recognising that there are lots of developments underway that are really important, that we are trying to make progress on. So that's one of the big things that we've been doing. The other big thing that I've been working on is around discharge from hospitals and getting that flow so that you can free up hospital capacity. That involves working with the local authority, with care homes in the area to make sure that there are places for people to go and that the people are receiving the appropriate care and rehabilitation when they're discharged from hospital. That's a really, really big issue. And while all of that has been going on operationally, we're also starting to think about things like health inequalities and what our plans might be going forward in terms of supporting different communities across Buckinghamshire. So that's one of the challenges of this role is what's often referred to as that kind of split screen thinking. So dealing with today's challenges in health and care whilst also thinking about the future and transforming services into the future, which is a very big, it's a big challenge to do both things at the same time, but it's an absolutely essential challenge to grasp, I think. So that's where I'm at. And I'm just really keen to be here. I'm very pleased to be here and interested to hear your perspectives on the issues that really matter to people in Buckingham. And I can take away any issues that I can't answer directly tonight and see if I can find out more or pursue any issues that are important. So yeah, happy to hear whatever you've got on your minds.
Thank you very much. So initially, you can take that away about where we're at with that new health centre, which has been around for maybe five years.
Yeah.
Where it was first proposed. And we've got the site, empty site there ready. And nothing has happened with it at all.
Yeah.
And overstretched GP practice in the town, serving a ever-growing population. And people feeling that they're struggling to get appointments or even to get phone calls. So that's the overall context. If we can get some response about that. And then I've got councillor Davies wanting to ask a question.
Hi, thank you for your presence this evening. My question is regarding whether Milton Keynes is within your remit as well. And the reason I ask is I know of at least two people who had relatives who had been taken into Milton Keynes Hospital from Buckingham addresses and were needing discharges to care homes following their treatment in hospital. But because Milton Keynes definitely is your authority to Bucks Council, Bucks Council wouldn't go to Milton Keynes Hospital to assess their needs. And Milton Keynes wouldn't assess their needs with discharged Buckingham care homes. So where does that lie? What's the solution to that?
Yeah. Shall I answer or do you want to? Thanks for that. You're absolutely right. We cover Buckinghamshire residents. So if you are registered with a GP in Buckinghamshire, we are system, obviously. And so we do work with our hospitals across the border because the most important thing is to look after people rather than where the boundary sits. So we work with Milton Keynes, we work with Wexham Park down in the south to support discharges. So I can't really comment on that particular case. But what I would imagine should be happening is that the hospital is looking after and assessing that person. And then they are discharged into care homes in Buckinghamshire. I think there should be a reasonably advanced process for doing that. But it has been a really, really challenged year. Certainly huge pressure in terms of discharges and in terms of capacity in care homes. So there may have been other issues that were sort of impacting that. For example, social worker availability, having a lot of trouble recruiting the right numbers of social workers. That can make it difficult to undertake assessments, et cetera. So there can be a lot of factors that could contribute to a system like that. And I'm not sure about the details of that particular case. But certainly, this should be one of those areas where we just have to figure out how to work together as a system to get people discharged, get them home or get them to a care home, whatever's appropriate for them as quickly as possible. Yeah.
Thank you very much. I don't know how much you're familiar with the geography of Buckingham and relating to other towns around, but Milton Keynes is our nearest big hospital.
Yes.
Stanchingly closer than Stoke Mandeville.
Yeah.
And much easier from the point of view of visiting. So you're aware of that.
And it shouldn't be, that shouldn't be an issue. So we are aware of that. We don't sort of cut our boundaries so that if you're treated in Milton Keynes, we, you know, we don't have anything to do with you. We serve the residents of Buckinghamshire, whichever hospital they end up going into.
That's reassuring. Can I just ask, you look into that point? Because I do know personally of two instances which happened prior to Christmas with Buckingham residents that couldn't come back to Buckingham care homes in time for Christmas.
Thank you for this issue. Thank you. We've got councillor Cole next.
Thank you. Good evening, Philippa. My name is Mark Cole. I'm chairman of the planning committee here. And this is a planning question for you. We've had a lot of large estate developments recently, and we keep pushing some of the section 106 money. That's the mitigation money for the estates to go for health provisions. The last two occasions, both those requests were rebuked because the season of GPs failed, according to Buckinghamshire Council, provide the evidence they needed to direct some of their developers' money towards patient care, towards health provisions. Now the CCGs have gone, are you as Bob going to provide those figures that Buckinghamshire Council will need so we can move on and get money for health and provisions? Our single practice here in Buckingham looks after 30,000 patients, about 16,500 in Buckingham and then all the villages on the hinterland. And it's just bursting at the seams.
Yeah, so I'm aware of a few projects that are looking at section 106 money. We certainly would be trying to do everything we can to obtain section 106 money if it's available and appropriate. So do you know which particular developments or? Anyway, it would be helpful if you want to let me know which particular cases you're talking about there where the CCG didn't.
The latest one was Landoff O0 Way, which was a big development on the south west side of the town. It's going to be for 420 houses, 420 houses when it's completed. Not a single penny of that money is going to health provisions.
Because we don't have these still in this part of Buckinghamshire. In the south of Buckinghamshire, they automatically get money for healthcare, but we don't here. That's something else you need to be aware of. Perhaps councillor Cole can give you a little precis by email. Thank you.
Yeah.
I've got councillor.
Good evening, Philippa. Both Robyn on my right and myself sit on the Hazak Committee. And we've recently set up a scrutiny group to cover the three areas you mentioned. And I look forward to welcoming you at one of those. One of the problems we found out through surveys of the primary care network was that there is no common platform for transferring IT information between Milton Keynes Hospital and us. And I've been told that they're going to rectify this, but that was about two years ago. What happens is patients go to Milton Keynes Hospital, they're seen, and their records should be transferred by, you know, common IT system to their local GP. However, the only fail-safe way of doing that is to send it by post. And I hope you can put pressure on the IT to be sorted out. I'm sure people like Microsoft can do it. You can do it. Anyway, I look forward to welcoming you at my address on the primary care network. Oh, we're not primary care network, on the Hazak Committee, so the scrutiny. So good luck in your new job.
Thank you. And I mean, digital is again, one of those things that's come across my desk. I don't claim to be an expert in digital. There are lots of complexities about moving people's patient data around. And we do have a digital team in Bob that is looking at those sorts of issues. We want to make it as easy as possible. It's one of the big barriers that we face in many, many different ways in the health system. It just isn't, there isn't a single patient record that transfers smoothly across and interfaces across boundaries and across the different providers of care. So it is a real challenge and it's really important to get it right as well. So recognise that as a challenge. And I hadn't heard the specific issue around the Milton Keynes boundary issue. So I will, I will look into that as well.
Thank you very much. Councillor Try is next.
Good evening, Martin Schreier here. Bringing it back to Buckingham, we're, as maybe you've got the feel, freaking at the seams with our doctors' infrastructure. And we have got, or trying to facilitate movement to a working group and a forum in association with the Swan Practice.
Yeah.
One of the problems I've had before was trying to forecast provision for the future. And it was, the CCG had a different forecasting parameter, maybe only five years, where the Swan Practice as a business wanted maybe look for 10, maybe a bit more years. And there was that disconnect, which I think was one of the issues we hold up. So again, something else for you to put on that everlasting list of yours. Because we're ever in hope of getting an integrated unit up here, which can do just more than a doctor's surgery could and being a little hub up here. So that's our intention, being on this long spine as we are at the top of the county.
Yeah. And I mean, you're really fortunate with, I've been meeting a few times with George Gavriel at the Swan Practice. And, you know, they are very innovative up there and they're doing a lot of really interesting things. And George chairs the GP leadership group for Buckinghamshire. So there's lots of sort of positive opportunities, I think, for Buckingham in terms of primary care. But recognise that frustration about getting the estate set up and matching that ambition with those practical changes. So yeah, I think that's really interesting. And yeah, interesting about the forecasting. We possibly don't have all the data that we might like, but I'm happy to take away and talk to George about what he might need and whether we can, we can help in any way.
Brilliant. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And councillor Harvey.
Well, good to meet you, good to see you. Just a couple of points. Forty years ago, I was involved in, well, I ran a jointly funded project from East Berkshire, West Berkshire and Berkshire Social Services. So you have my sympathies because this has been around a long time. The whole issue about mashing together social care and healthcare provision. That job focused on people with loneliness, but the problems are common. I've also been a director of collaboration with the six police authorities of the east of England as well. And again, there are real problems there. And the real problem really centres on budgets, budget boundaries. And given your role in shaping the legislation and the context within which the Integrated Care Board and partnership are operating, how have you overcome the contradictory sort of, you can't have our budget, even if it makes sense for, say, health money to go to some aspect of social care or indeed vice versa? How have you got over that? Because that's the only real promise and hope of these new ICBS. Because if you're going to spend your time smoothing out the wrinkles in the sheet and the sheets of healthcare provision and social care provision in the three counties, you're going to be here until 50 years' time. So it's about looking at how do you facilitate that budgetary, I don't know, grenade people thought throw from one budget to another? How has that been resolved with the new system?
Hmm. It's a really, really good question. And I think there's probably two aspects to it. So in terms of the creation of an integrated system, i.e. a bigger footprint than a CCG footprint previously, one of the reasons that was done nationally is because it gives systems more allocative clout over their patch. So in theory, they can take that bigger budget and allocate it where the need is. And they can redistribute. So for example, if one area wanted, needed investment in estates one year, they could prioritise them and prioritise another area for something different, et cetera. So that is the theory behind the creation of systems. And then at local partnership level, I would see my role as very much looking at how do we ensure we use our resources best for Buckinghamshire? And part of that may be about more budget pooling. So using, for example, you may be familiar with the Better Care Fund from your background. So section 75 arrangements also enable health and local government to pool budgets together. And I think I would hope to see more and more of that sort of activity. Because when you've got a pool budget, instead of arguing about, you know, whose bottom line X or Y is coming out of, you can really just focus on how you're going to use that money best to deliver the outcomes that, you know, the shared outcomes that everybody wants. So I definitely see it as part of that role, this role to move towards that. But I also see that this isn't the kind of job you come into and then fix everything straight away. It's about developing and maturing the relationships, building trust-based relationships over time, building more confidence to pull more budgets and do more things jointly and showing that by coming together, you can deliver changes. So whether it's on things like discharge or send is another great example of a kind of cross organisational challenge that we have to come together to solve. I think it will take time, but that's definitely the journey and the direction of travel that we're going in. It's not likely that we're going to just get loads more money. We have to do better with the resources that we have and not just money, but also people. So looking at integrating our workforce more, making the best use of the skills that we have. Looking at primary care, for example, it's quite hard to recruit GPs. Very hard, in fact. It's a huge challenge, a national challenge around recruiting GP. So can we look at other skills, other types of, you know, pharmacists and paramedics and others who can support and provide services to people, better use of nursing, et cetera. So it's about taking the resources you have and pooling them and using them as well as you can and taking those decisions jointly. I think that's what a maturing model will look like, but it's certainly not something that you can solve overnight. And it is complex, as you say.
Thank you very much. I've got councillor Stockbury.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much for coming. Importantly, how are you going to measure change and how are you going to measure achievement? How are you going to monitor improvement? You haven't said anything about that. You said a lot about what might be. We've heard a lot of what the problems are. But I haven't heard how you're going to do either one of those three things. Without those three things, it becomes a talking shop.
I think, I think you're very right. It's really important to have a clear sense of the outcomes that you're tracking and to know whether you're making any progress whatsoever. So at system level, the Integrated Care Partnership has just consulted on its strategy, which is going to set out a number of priorities for the patch as a whole. And once those are agreed and published, then you'll have metrics sitting beneath those which you can track and follow and deliver over time. Some metrics will be the sorts of things that you track on a yearly basis. Like, for example, are we reducing the numbers of people who are stuck in hospital but medically optimised for discharge? That might be something you're looking to track year on year. But then there are other outcomes like smoking cessation, for example, or obesity that you might be tracking on a much longer timeframe. They might take more of a five-year sort of timeframe to track. So once those objectives are fixed, then over time, we'll develop the right mechanisms to track them. But it's really important for transparency that we do that.
So you're going to publish your objectives? Because if you publish your objectives, we can't monitor whether you step forward, stayed together. Because those of us who've been unfortunate have seen all these things over many years. We keep going around in a circle asking the same questions and the same people with different names. So I'm interested in what you're putting in rigor. There needs to be rigor in the system. There also needs to be accountability. And there needs to be public accountability about that. Well, without that, you can't measure the outcomes. And I really fear that I've heard, I recognise all the concerns here, but unless we can actually scrutinise the very issues there, you're in favour of, in fact, likely to not succeed at all because you've not defined what you're going to succeed about.
I don't know if you want to respond to that or?
Well, I would just say that we have just finished our consultation on the Integrated Care Strategy, which sets out our priorities for the system. And so that hasn't been nailed down yet. Once that's been confirmed, it will be published. And it'll be published by, I think, May this year is the target. That will set out what we are aiming to achieve. And then from that, you can then measure us and our success against those particular priorities that are set out in that strategy.
Thank you very much. I'll take one final question from councillor Willitt.
I'm Ryan Willitt and welcome, Philippa. Just a quick question as well, because I see a lot of figures get lumped together, you know, from national statistics and things like that. Is there going to be a breakdown of counties or per hospital? Or are we expecting just one lump, you know, Bucks, Oxford, Berkshire? You know, because sometimes I can, I feel a lot with the public, sometimes these figures can get conflated and quite, you know, confusing after a while. Is there going to be a clear breakdown?
Do you mean spending figures in particular, kind of out? Do you mean spending figures, in particular kind of outcome data?
Spending figures, satisfaction figures, you know, various figures, is that going to? Yeah.
Yeah. So there will be spending figures, a budget for each place. But there will be, just to make it a bit complicated, there will be some spend that's held at system level and then some spend that will be delegated down to place, but there will be a place budget. So at the moment, I think the ICB budget is about 2.6 billion and the Buckinghamshire allocation from that is about nine hundred and thirty million. Don't quote me on that, but it's something in that region. So we will always be able to sort of say broadly, this is the place based budget. This is how the system distributes its budgets. Within that though, there will be lots of different budget streams, some pooled budgets, some budgets that flow through the hospital, some budgets that flow through primary care contracts that come down nationally, et cetera. So it does get a little bit complicated. And in terms of the outcomes, I think it will be really important that we are able to differentiate between the outcomes for people in Buckinghamshire and the other parts of the patch, particularly when you're looking at things like health inequalities or you're targeting particular cohorts. You need to be able to show not just that you're improving on a macro level, but that you're actually supporting particular groups that might need additional support or working with socially deprived communities and things like that. So there will be those breakdowns, but we are still sort of developing all of those processes at this stage. So they don't exist in that form yet, but that's definitely something that we will want to be able to do over time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much on behalf of everyone here for responding so well and for giving us an introduction to the new system. And we look forward to working with you in the future. And I'm sure you'll receive a few emails and maybe you'll be able to discuss what you've said tonight further at a future meeting. And I'm really reassured that you're for Buckinghamshire. It's the three areas have been divided up in that way, but Buckinghamshire is a big county.
Yeah.
So anyway, thank you for coming tonight. You're welcome to stay if you'd like.
I shall leave you to your business, but no, it's really good to meet everybody and really happy to come back another time and answer emails. You know who I am or where I am now. So yeah, see you again soon. Thank you. Bye bye.
Good job, Philippa. Paddy worked for three years trying on that integrated. Item five is the motion proposed by councillor Harvey. Do you want to read it out, councillor Harvey or?
I would say, wouldn't say necessarily.
It's quite long.
It's quite long.
Yeah.
And it says very important.
Agree.
I'm simply proposing an idea that we as a body join this organisation and use their advice and support and get support back. Because all of us here, I think, would want there to be lots of room spaces and more room spaces.
Yeah. Indeed. Just a couple of questions. You can sit down. And we've got a second there and we've got the motion on the table. But I'm just wondering, I know it's only forty five pounds a year, but is there a budget heading for that? Or do we look through flat?
It looks to have the advice.
And the other thing I was wondering about was whether the Chair of the Environment Committee would, because it seems to sit more with the Environment Committee, would you be in support of this?
I would be in support of this. And I'm sure we can find forty five pounds somewhere.
I did look at the website earlier, open spaces, and it seems to be one of the oldest environmental charities in the country. So it's obviously got a long history and alongside national.
Yeah.
So tell us about the budget.
We can probably just about squeeze out subscriptions. I mean, one thing I presume if we're joining, the intent would be to continue to pay for the members on the course of the future.
Well, we could review that, of course, but in the first instance, it would be for a year, but yeah.
I'll check if we have, if council's commission, I'll check if we have the money within the subscription budget. It might be a bit tight. If not, then I will take it from contingencies.
Thank you. So can we vote on this proposal then?
Yeah.
And those in favour please show.
Agree.
But as you announced.
That sounds like it's agreeing.
Thank you very much. And I don't think I've got any chairs announced. And then the next vote counts since the twentieth of March and it's along the twenty fourth of April.